All right. Well, I'm excited to be here today and honored to be welcoming you all for our Cancer Town Hall meeting. My name is Jeremy Otz. I'm the Radiation Therapist in Radiation Oncology. And I had the privilege of being on this planning committee with Dr. Mila, our Director of Cancer Institute, Dr. Megason, our Clinical Medical Director, and Dana Brandt, the Director of Patient Affairs, Shannon Weatherly, Administrator Assistant, and Steve Roth, our Cancer Institute Administrator. As you can see here, this will be the theme of our presentation today, Stronger Together, and just kind of emphasizing to all our staff at the Cancer Institute how important this is. And without any further ado, I'm going to introduce Dr. Keaton, our Vice Chancellor, to say a few words for us. Thanks.
Thank you. You probably can hear me without this, and when I looked out and saw the size of this room and noticed that you're just like you're back in church or at your school, you've spread out and just maximized this room, didn't you? But so I thought I'd get a little closer to you. I've been asked to talk to you a little about the medical center and who we are and what we are and where we're trying to go. If you don't remember anything else, the most important thing to remember is we're different. So many people drive by this place and 168 acres up here. Is this working? Can you hear me through this? Okay, good. And they say, "Oh, there's a charity hospital. I think it has a med school with it." And then that's all they think. And they refer, I get asked out in public all the time, "How's the hospital going?" Well, I say, "Well, there are a few other things going there, too. There's 27, by the way, there's 2,700 students this year on our campus and $80 to $90 million worth of research on our campus and $1 billion worth of clinical care." And you know, and they look at me like, "Oh, I didn't know y'all did all that." And so I have to constantly tell people that we're an academic health science center or we're an academic medical center, and it's amazing how many people don't know. And then I say, "Oh, by the way, you know the VA? That's part of us, too. That's a dean's VA. They actually have to meet with me once a month. That's required from Washington." And their $350 million budget and 2,300 employees added to ours truly do make us the largest employer in Mississippi, right in there with the shipyard on the coast. And when you add our $1.4 billion to theirs, we're up to about a $1.8 billion business, basically the largest business in Mississippi except for the state budget itself. So you know, we are different and we are something and we are important. And I don't mean that as bragging points. I mean that as just reality and truth. And we have a mission here, you know, there are three missions, there's education, patient care, and research. The number one issue being education. But we do have a mission here to do something about healthcare disparity in this state. We're the poorest state, they say, and we also have the worst healthcare disparity of obesity and cancer, you name it, we got it, buddy. We can, we can outdo anybody for the difficulty that we take care of. All I see as that is opportunities for this institution, and I think we have a moral responsibility to do something about it. Now, you see us do a great deal of marketing and you'll hear a little bit about that in a minute, and we do a great deal of marketing and, but we're getting ready to change how we do our marketing because we're not competing with the other sister institutions in this city anymore. We're a statewide institution. 50% of our patient care comes from outside the greater Jackson area. We're a state institution. We're not just a hospital sitting in the middle of Jackson. So we, we take that very seriously. Now, let me give you the statistics we just learned, and it fits in with your world. We just learned that we get 45% of our revenue from 11% of our patients. And when we looked at that 11%, they're the highest complex patient we take care of. That's the patient y'all take care of, is a big part of. So the more difficult the patient, ironically, the more money we make. Boy, what a deal. Because that's what we want to do. That's what our, we should be doing. We should be taking care of the most difficult and the most complex patient there is. That should be part of our mission. We can let the other people do what they do well, and I was in private practice for a long time. There are very good physicians in this city and around the state giving good care to people. And I think that, that's, that's important to know that. But I think that we have an obligation to do the most complex stuff, whether it be cancer or trauma or children's care or transplants, you name it. If it's difficult, I want us to do it. And we partnered with HMA and we're partnering with Tupelo and we have a family medicine program at Baptist. We have all these different things we do with the other institutions. And we want to partner with them and be their friends and do things with them. But we still want to be the tertiary care, quadriary care for Mississippi. I think Mississippi wants that, and I think that's our role in a big way. So I need you all to help me. We have four centers in effect. We have the Cancer Institute, we have the obesity, we have the Mind Center, we have the cardiovascular. The beauty of all four of those, I'm not sure that's a good word to use, but they're all tied together. If you're obese, you have a much higher chance of having cancer, you have a much higher chance of having Alzheimer's and cardiovascular disease. So whether you and the world of cancer realize it or not, we're all tied together in this deal. And we're not going to do more than those four. That's about the max we can really put our resources in. And all four of those will have something to do with changing healthcare in Mississippi. Now, there are lots of other things we do, but those are the four we're going to put our resources, we're going to try, try to raise money for. And we have great support from our state. State legislature adores us. They think that we do good work. I report to the chancellor at Ole Miss. You'll never hear me call us Ole Miss, though, because most of you didn't go to Ole Miss, so I'd be a fool to use that word. But we, I report to the chancellor at Ole Miss and he reports to the Institution of Higher Learning. But our budget is totally separate from Ole Miss. In fact, it's about four times as large as Ole Miss, and thank God we don't have a football team. But, but we, so I have to go to the legislature for 11% of our money, which is about $160 million, separate from the chancellor at Ole Miss. And it's really a good thing because they like to see the medical center separately. They think this is their hospital system and their clinical care world. But they appreciate what we do and what we're doing for the state. So sort of in this, I appreciate what you do. I appreciate what we're trying to do here. We're turning the corner now. In the healthcare world, last year we lost 20-something million dollars mainly because of a very expensive epic, about $90 million. A very big bump up in the uninsured that we get a lot of. But at the end of June, we were at neutral. We did not lose any money last year. That's a huge turnaround in one year. And this last month in, in our system, we made a million dollars. So things are turning and we're not, I've spent my last two years, all I seemed to worry about was money. And that's what I should continue to worry about to some degree and you not worry about that. That's not your job. But we're going to worry about quality now and teamwork and putting all these things together to make a difference in Mississippi. So thank you for allowing me to speak to you today, and I really appreciate what you're all doing.
Good afternoon. I'm Rhonda Marks. I'm Chief Marketing Officer for University Medical Center, and I'm honored to be here with you today. And I'm here because we're introducing some videos to you today that you'll see in between presentations from your speakers. You'll see several videos today, two of which are patient testimonials. We recently were involved in videotaping six patient testimonials along with six physician testimonials. And I can't tell you how moving and how important this information is that the patients and the physicians share in these videos. And I just want to thank you for the work that you do here because I think it's embodied in what you'll hear later in these videos. We're going to be presenting these videos, actually, you're only in the second group to see these videos. We're launching them on the website, on the cancer homepage. Those were launched yesterday. So if you'd like to view the other four, you can log into umhc.com/cancer and they'll be right there for you to see. And you may recognize some of the individuals in the videos as well, you may have cared for some of these patients. They'll also be online and featured in online ads. And they're so good and they're so powerful, we are considering doing some other advertising with these, not only these videos, but hopefully doing some print ads with them as well. So again, thank you so much for having us here today. And if you ever have anything that you need or if you ever have any questions that we can answer, we're glad to do that for you. Thank you.
This is, what I can see in the audience is a microcosm of people that are involved in the Cancer Institute from all aspects of it. I can see basic scientists, I can see specialists from radiology to neurology to medical oncology, I can see nurses, I can see administrators, I can see bioinformaticians, information technology people, bone marrow transplantation directors, and I can go on and on and on, two navigators. So this is what it takes to set the standards in cancer care. Now, I have been privileged to work in a number of academic medical centers in three different countries, in different places of this country. One thing that I can tell you, and it's not to flatter you all, I have never seen this level of dedication to patient care, to excellence. I have also never seen the challenges that we face. So we're, we've got a big task ahead of us. We're very visible, as Dr. Keaton said, we're one of the priority programs for the University Medical Center, and we have a perception to make up for that we're the charity hospital where you're treated by students. In actuality, as you all know by now, having seen the banners from U.S. News and World Report, we're actually the only high-performing institution for survival and for a number of other measures for cancer in this state. So we're already setting the standards and we need to do a lot more than that. Now, that's a scoring system, as you know, that goes from 1 to 100. We score about 42. The way to bump up is to, number one, achieve NCI designation, and that is something that can only be done through teamwork and research. And the other two is to become a nurse magnet hospital. That's above my pay grade. But if we had do, these two things, our score is in the same order of magnitude as those of places like Yale, Roswell Park, the University of Chicago. I mean, this is who is in our neighborhood from the standpoint of score. So we're not very far off the mark. We do need to do marketing because this is still not very well-known. I received an email yesterday that brought this home to me. I got an email from a woman who is a community health advisor coordinator for the Deep South Network for Cancer Control. So this is a network that's been put in place originally by UAB in Alabama and in Mississippi. These are people that teach cancer prevention and cancer awareness to the community. So they are better informed than the average person in the community. And this lady writes to the whole leadership of the Deep South Network that includes me and Sharon Wyatt, saying, "I wonder whether I can go to UAB to get my mammogram. I have insurance and I've decided to start doing regular mammograms, and I think that's the closest place where I can go get one." So luckily, we're now part of the Deep South Network, and so the people at UAB said, "No, no, no, I, I, I think our friends in Jackson can help." And so I was able to put them in touch with Vicki, our breast navigator. I saw you, there you are. And so they didn't know that we have a breast multidisciplinary team, that we have a breast imaging center, that yes, we can handle patients with large breasts, that was part of the question. So this is within our own state. So we do need to, all of us be ambassadors for the fact that we do have a wonderful cancer institute and one that is getting better and better. Now, the theme for today is team building, and I'm very pleased to see people from all the different groups of disciplines that are necessary. This is not just a sort of feel-good kumbaya, it is actually necessary. As those of you who see patients know very well, when one goes to medical school, the experience that one learns is an individual one. Somebody with an affliction comes to you and you take care of them. Well, with cancer, as you all know, that gets a lot more complicated very fast. Multiple specialties from radiology to pathology to oncology to surgery to neurosurgery, orthopedics, psychology, they're all needed to treat a cancer patient, not to mention nursing staff, navigators, and so on and so forth. And it's a type of disease where we don't really have all the answers and we need research. I'm going to leave the microphone soon because there's more interesting things for you to see. But I do want to share how I learned about teamwork in a very personal way. Some of you know this story and some don't. When I was a medical student in about 15, 20 or so, I, I was training in a place where they had a center of excellence for chronic liver disease. So we had a ward full of patients with chronic hepatitis, who developed cirrhosis, who developed liver carcinoma, and who died. And I was feeling pretty good about myself. I was a student with the highest GPA in the school. I had a perfect score in every subject, every test, never missed a question. So I thought, hey, I'm really learning something. So I was having fun, you know, in getting physicals and histories and physicals and all that. And then I diagnosed my own father with the disease that we were all treating. He had had some type of hepatitis, back then the virus wasn't even known. He had developed a chronic hepatitis, he developed cirrhosis, developed hepatocellular carcinoma, and he died. The shock for me was to realize that not only did I, a medical student, not know how to treat this disease, no one knew, not my professors, not any experts in any other countries. All we knew is that these little immune cells were destroying the liver and maybe we can give him immunosuppressants and maybe it'll go away. It was all wrong. That treatment doesn't work. The treatment that we have now is the opposite of it. My point is that armies of people that were seeing patients could not have figured out the mechanism of that disease without other armies of people in the lab. 10 years after my father died, the virus that causes hepatitis C was isolated in another Italian university in Torino. The sequence of his genome was obtained. Four years later, we had a blood test based on PCR. We had a treatment with beta interferon that does a lot better than the old fashioned treatments. And now we're looking at HCV losing its status as the primary cause for liver transplant in the developed world because we know the virus, we know what it is, we know how to detect it, we know how to prevent it, and we know how to treat it. None of that would have been possible without people in the lab coming out with DNA sequencing, PCR, immunoassays for it, immunology, pharmacology. So in our world, if we want to make a difference, we all have to work together. I am very happy to see more and more researchers attending our clinical conferences because they want to become informed about the diseases that they're studying in the lab. I'm going to push for more, more research information coming to residents and fellows and attendings so that more collaboration can happen. But the type of group that I see today here is what we need to make it to the next step, not only be the best in the state, but be among the best in the country and the world. And I'm going to thank you again for being here.
Easter weekend, I rolled over and noticed a lump in my breast. And I knew it was, had not been there before, like a month before.
She presented with a lump that she found herself and got a mammogram, and it looked suspicious.
Later on that week is when I found out that I had breast cancer.
Debbie's case was one which she had a primary tumor in the breast but had a lymph node that was involved, which means that she had stage-two breast cancer.
You don't think about how cancer in a parent impacts your children, but it does. Shortly after my breast cancer diagnosis, my daughter's classroom got together and drew pictures. Those are some things that I have kept over the years because they always reminded me of how I felt.
She elected to undergo evaluation after having a mastectomy to entertain possibilities through experimental data and determine what would be the best treatment for her.
And one of the things that I knew that I wanted to do when I was diagnosed with breast cancer is to see if there was a clinical trial that I could participate in.
She enrolled on, on a study, and the study compared known drugs with some unknown combinations, which most studies do. We knew that no matter what she got, it would be as good as any other combination, but it also might be better.
My experience here at the university is one that was very caring physicians. My surgeon at the time was very understanding, explained my options to me, and went over those options in great detail with me.
We try to show you that the answer to your problem is going to be simple. Let's just take it step by step and day by day, and ultimately we'll get the answer to what you need.
I feel like I stand on the shoulders of all the other people who participated in clinical trials before me because that is how we get our new cancer treatment. I know that this is a place that has physicians who keep up with everything that's going on in cancer care.
If I were a cancer patient, I would say, I would want to go where people are not willing to go to sleep without knowing, is there a better answer? And if there's a better answer, I want to deliver that to my patient.
I know that I have my trust in what they're going to do for me as a patient, and I have over all of these years. My name is Debbie, and I am a cancer survivor. My life is proof.
All right, I'm Dr. Gail Megason. I'm the Clinical Medical Director for the Cancer Institute. So I'm here to tell you today that we need to work as a team, like Dr. Mila says. My interest is in helping you do your job. So if you need help doing your job, then I want you to let me know. Let me know, let Dr. Mila know, let Steve Roth know, let any of us know what it is you need every day, what it is you could do that would help you do your job better. I'm interested in quality, I'm interested in patient safety, and then of course, clinical outcomes. Those are the things that we are most interested in and where we should be for the Cancer Institute. I don't know if anybody still reads the paper. I still am addicted to the newspaper. I have to get it out and read it every morning. Did you read this morning about burnout in physicians? Did you read that? It said that 45% of physicians have some symptoms of burnout. 45%. But what it did say was that the changes in medicine that were happening, that they thought would actually improve that, was that people were going to a team concept. In other words, what we do every day is very difficult. It's very challenging. But to be able to share that with nurses, with pharmacists, with social workers, with activity therapists, with child life, with school teachers, with radiation oncology technicians, with all of these other people helps reduce our burden and helps reduce the burnout. So I think that was just very prophetic for what we're here today for, trying to sell to you that if we work together as a team, we can do much more for many more people, and that's what we want to do. I also went to my, I won't even tell you what year, high school reunion this past weekend, many years, many years, high school reunion this past weekend, and everybody would say, "Oh, my God, I can't believe..." When they say, "What do you do?", and I say, "Well, I take care of children who have cancer", and they're all like, "Oh, my God, that's so painful and how do you do that?" One of the individuals I was talking to was a master social worker, and so she started to, she works in the DHS system. So she started telling me about her day and what she deals with and what she has to do. And I was like, "Oh, my God, you make my job sound good because I fix people." And she has all of these children that she cannot fix because the situations are so deep. So we fix people. That's the story that you need to know. We fix people, and with all of everybody's help, we can keep doing that. So I want to show you a little video from the pediatric world, and this is what we're all about. So Paige and Justin are the perfect couple, at least according to the Children's Cancer Clinic, or at least from our perspective. Both of them had acute lymphocytic leukemia, which is the most common leukemia that we treat. Both of them are now long-term survivors. Justin actually relapsed later and had to be re-treated and had lots of complications from that, but nevertheless is again now a long-term survivor. They met at Camp Rainbow, which is a camp that American Cancer Society sponsors for children with cancer or off-therapy. They've attended Camp Rainbow all their life until they got old enough to be counselors for Camp Rainbow, and this is where they met. And this is where they fell in love. And actually, at Camp Rainbow last summer is when he proposed.
There were just a few of us in the infirmary who knew it was going to happen. He wanted me to be there with my camera, so I took pictures.
Did you ever think you'd ever see two patients get married?
No, it was so sweet.
Very romantic?
Yes. It was the perfect place for them to get engaged. It's a match made in heaven.
Well, I met her in a hospital when I was six, she was two. We both had leukemia, and we kind of kept in touch through the years, our parents and everybody's kept in touch. And then she started coming to camp, and then that's where we got to, just talking back and forth. It was about two years ago we started, we started dating and hanging out, and then it was a year ago tomorrow that we got engaged, so we just got married two weeks ago.
Did Paige have a clue?
No, she had no clue. So that was fun.
What was her reaction?
Oh, she was very surprised. She was teary, she was excited. But yeah, she was caught completely off guard.
We've known him since he was a young child, so we were, he was alluding to that there might be a surprise, so we were kind of, in the infirmary at least, we're kind of saying, "Is there a ring? Is there a ring?", and he wouldn't confirm that, but we were, yes, suspicious.
It's very odd the way the world works at night.
It is. It is very.
What was the wedding like?
Beautiful. It was, it was, I mean, I can't even explain it.
It was a fairytale wedding, just to see, I mean, there were pictures from both of their past and to see their love grow from stage to stage where they met in, at the hospital, and then pictures at camp, and then post-engagement. And I mean, just to see their love escalate from one stage to the next.
How early on in the relationship did you think that this might be the result? Did you have, I mean, did you?
When they first started hanging out, definitely.
You knew they were a match set?
Yes, definitely. And Paige is always wanting someone like Justin, so she found him.
What do you think it means to these kids to see you all?
I think it gives them, like, it kind of inspires them. I know when I saw fellow, like, counselors that were my age when they were sick, it just made me kind of realize that there's more, like, it's kind of a chain, you know? I think it gives them hope that there's more, more to life than just treatments and being sick and that there's, there's hope. And I think it gives the parents hope, too, to see, to see us well and healthy.
They are a picture of hope, of kids that have grown up, that also had cancer but have grown up now and have jobs and are living happy lives and productive lives, and that that's in their future, that just, the word "hope" is the best one I can think of.
What do you like about him?
I mostly do everything, being around this guy right here.
He's a pretty good guy?
Yeah.
If common experiences make for a good marriage?
They got this, they got this covered.
To see a love that can last and endure so much, I mean, it's just, I mean, like you said, there's a bond there that not many people share or ever will share.
I expect nothing but a bright future for both of them. And it is just inspiring, like, this is what we're all about, survivorship. And these two young people are, are doing normal things, and so we're just delighted. things and so we're just delighted for both of them.
Well, what a huge smile you have to have after that incredible video. Hello, everyone, I'm Dana and I am privileged and honored to be your Director of Patient Affairs for the last five years. I've been here 11 years and they're the beauty and the brains back there. I'm the fun girl. So let's have a conversation about who you are as individuals. Part of my job over the next year is to come out and meet with you individually as departments and teams and help you discover the best of you. Let me show you this quote that I found very interesting. "An unhappy customer remembers the incident for 23.5 years and talks about it for 18 months." An unhappy customer. Let's think about an unhappy patient. Now, that doesn't say that a patient encounter with a physician and they think about it for 23.5 years and talk about it for 18 months. Anyone who's had something memorable, an incident occur, look at that statistic. Look at that. The reason it's so important for me to have conversations with you about what motivates you and about what every day it takes to inspire you, because the more you're inspired, the more you're motivated, the more you give to patients and families that result in phenomenal things here in the university. So I thought about this for a little bit and I was thinking, you know, what do I remember from 23.5 years ago? Sure, you're thinking, "It's my birth." No. So I was thinking, you know, and what could I talk about that almost every person in this room could share a story with me about that particular event? And I thought about something that was very significant to all of us and I want you to raise your hand for me. How many of you have attended your senior prom, high school prom? Raise your hand. Raise your hand. Lot of people in the room, about 90% of the people here. How many of you attended prom in the 1960s? Nobody's willing to admit it. How many of you have attended prom in the 1970s? Fantastic, you look good. How many attended in the 1980s? 1987? Anybody? Okay. How many attended in the 90s? That's depressing. Anybody in 2000? Oh, God. Wow. So I was thinking, 20, mine was 25 years ago. Customers remember, people remember. How much detail could we remember from prom? Yeah, baby, that's me. I was thin, I was tan and I was fabulous. Seventeen years old, 1987. Look at that blue eyeshadow. That is fantastic. My hair was as big as that podium. I thought I was extremely hot. That dress was $139.99. It was blue silk taffeta from bust to floor. Those are dyed goose feathers with silver streamers all the way around the back. And let me tell you something, when I danced, those goose feathers moved with me. I remember walking into the auditorium, it's about 575 people at my high school and I had the only dress like it, ladies, y'all know how important that is? You can connect with that. And my date, I do remember what he was wearing, black tux, the same blue silk bow tie, it was fantastic. He was a guitar player in a rock band that later went to prison, but that's a whole nother story. That's a good one. We'll talk about that later on. And I remember walking into the gymnasium and the opening song was, "You dropped the bomb on me, baby." Y'all remember the Gap Band? Let us remember the Gap Band. See, that's right. So that, classic music, classic music. So I do remember that and I danced the night away, danced the night away, all night long, every song, really into music and at midnight, really excited because not only did we go to the prom, what did we go to after the prom? The after-prom, the after-prom party. And I had a beautiful little white strapless sundress for that because I was tan and I was thin and I was fabulous. And so I decided to quickly go into the locker room and slip out of this dress and when I did, I looked in the mirror and I thought, "I did just take that blue dress off." You see, as I perspired through the night, those blue goose feathers dyed all over my skin. I looked like a Smurf. Everything was blue, all the way around the back, side to side. Now, I'm going to ask the gentleman this question, just to see if you've been paying attention. What's the only dress that I have left to put on for the rest of the evening? The white strapless sundress. And at 17, that's quite a devastating event, you could imagine my embarrassment, and as I stood in the mirror with tears streaming down my face, thinking, "I can't go on. I can't live through this. I can't possibly. It's too embarrassing. I'm a member of the student council. How could this happen to me?" And so I stood in the mirror and my girlfriends began to come through the door wondering, "Where are you? You know, we got to go to the after-prom." And they walked in, they're like, "Oh Dana, you're blue." Tears, and I could just see the tears dripping down me. They're like, "Well, girl, you know we're the Vikings. We're red and blue. We just tell people you're the mascot. Don't worry about it. We'll tell people you did it on purpose." And we began to laugh and giggle and they're like, "Y'all, I'm going home. I'm going home. I can't do this." They're like, "Girl, your daddy gave you permission to stay out at 5:00 AM. You're going home." I said, "I'm going home. I don't need the embarrassment." They're like, "Nope, nope, 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 nope." "We're going to the after-prom and we're taking you with us and when you get there, we're all just going to dance in a circle around you. Will nobody see you? You know, we'll just, we'll protect you and if anybody says anything about you, girl, we got your back." And so off we went to the after-prom and I found so much support and love and laughter with a bunch of 17-year-old kids. And at my class reunion, I was the girl with the dyed chest and the blue back that everybody got tickled at. And y'all, I was dyed for three months. I was blue until my freshman year of college. That was one cheap dress. Now, the reason that I tell you this story, you've seen some significant videos of people who have these phenomenal stories and you might be thinking to yourself, "Well now Dana, I just, I don't know if I have a story to tell. I don't know if I have something that motivates me that's this significant in my life. What's my story?" Anything that you've gone through as a person, as a teenager, as an individual, whether you're falling apart or falling together, makes you who you are as the professional and the giving person that you are. I need to discover the reason you're here. Why do you choose to walk through the doors you do every day? Why are you here? Guys, I speak to people throughout the Southeast, major corporations, do a lot of motivational speaking, a lot of conversations about better, providing better exceptional service to patients and families. And I ask this question a lot. I ask bosses every day, "Do you really know and understand the work ethic of the employees who are under you? Do you understand and know their own personal philosophies, mottos and creeds about who they are as professionals and how they choose to give service?" Because we can shove the mission and vision of this organization down your throat every day, but if you don't have your own personal foundation, your own personal belief about what patients and families mean to you, we can't build upon it. We can't become stronger together, as the screen said earlier. So I'm going to be asking that question. The funny thing is, is I was doing a customer service talk to UMC about eight years ago when we built the new hospital and I asked the question, "Why are you here?" And I always have friends in the audience and I never know what people are going to tell me because you guys have some phenomenal stories. And there was a police officer sitting out in the audience and Terrence, I think you were actually in that session. Young guy, probably, I don't know, mid-20s, maybe late 20s. And I said, "Stand up for me." And he was adorable. I loved him, we were good friends and I said, "You know, I've never asked you this question. Why are you here? You know, for policing at UMC, it's 99% PR most days and 1% policing some days." And a young officer who's out of an academy is excited about all the things that go on with policing. And I said, "Why are you here? You could be anywhere, any state, JPD, you could be out in the action. Why here at UMC? Why a police officer here?" And I had just never talked to him about it before. And so there were about 100 of us sitting in the room and he stood up and he said, "A few years ago, a little boy was beaten with a hairbrush so badly and dropped off at the ER, almost unrecognizable. Family just dropped him off." And he said, "A UMC police officer was the first to arrive, first to see him. And he scooped that child up and he brought him into the ER and he called his shift supervisor and he said, 'I think I'm going to stay with this child. Can I have somebody relieve me?'" Our UMC officer agreed to that and that UMC officer stayed with that child. He said, "I was that child. He said, 'I wouldn't be anywhere else. I'm going to stay here a while and I'm going to give back what was given to me.'" Is that powerful? That's walking beside you every day. The stories that you're going to share with one another that will empower each other. The things that you will embrace and learn about one another is significant, whether you're in that beautiful clinical coat or that suit and tie or the scrubs or the business attire, it matters. It matters. How many of you have had family members who've had cancer? Raise your hand for us. Wow, 90% of the room again. Well, there's my love. That's my momma. Doesn't that feel good to say? Momma. You can't help but smile when you say momma. You ever having a bad day, just talk about somebody's momma. "How's your momma?" Look at that breast cancer pin on her chest right there. She wore it every day for her nine years as she battled breast cancer, every day. And I picked her up for church one Sunday and she was standing in her little thin little shirt. She never had reconstructive, you know, she was in her 70s when she had breast cancer. And she was standing in her little thin shirt before she put her blouse on and her little skirt and she was shorter than me, she was about five feet tall and just funny, 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 funny lady. And she was standing in the mirror and I walked around the corner and I said, "Momma, you ready to go?" And she was rubbing her little scar. I said, "Are you okay?" She said, "That Glenda makes me laugh so hard. My scar hurts." I said, "Who's Glenda?" She said, "She's the nurse at the clinic where I had treatment yesterday. Lord, she got a joke from me every time I turn around. I just love her. You know, I look forward to going." And it hit me, there can be joy in cancer care and treatment. There could be happiness, there could be laughter, there could be love, there could be affection and it was given to her. I cannot tell you how much I love that team because I expected her to tell me she was hurting and in pain, but laughter, laughter made her soar. That's a fantastic story. So that's my story and I look forward to hearing more of yours. The one thing too, that I want you to understand today, the role that you play is pretty significant and you educating yourself about what patients and families expect from you is extremely important. But not only that, what do patients and families fear? Why are they anxious and why are they fearful when they come into a medical setting? I want you to take a look at the top 11 fears of patients and families and I want you to be thinking right now, because we're going to talk about this more when we have smaller sessions after this one throughout the year, about the significant role that you play as an individual. How do you relieve people's fear of infection? Incompetence? Death? Cost? Mix-ups? Needles? Look at number seven. "I fear rudeness." Attitude and behavior go a long way, guys. They will choose the nice people over the smart people every time, isn't that true? Germs, the prognosis, communication issues and loneliness. How many of your cancer patients want you to be part of their family? They're going to hook you up with their granddaughter. They love some of you. That's right. And so I want you to be thinking about these things as I come and speak with you, but I need you to know that everything you do touches the patient and family, but more so, the reason you're here is because of your team members. How many of you took the Morehead survey? Anybody take Morehead? The question is, why do you stay? Why are you here? They didn't say for patients and families. 99% of the people that answered that survey said, "I love my team. I look forward to coming to work for my team." And if in your team, you've heard, you know, those people across the hall, you know, they just don't have it together, I don't know what their problem is, that's part of your team. Discover what the problem is. We're not fighting against one another, we're fighting for each other. That has to be your personal mantra. That has to be your philosophy and your foundation. Barbie Bassett came and spoke to a group at the hospital a few weeks ago and she said something really significant. "I've always tried really hard, you know, to give that 180%." And she said, "You know, some people that you hire, some people that you work with try to be the great light, you know, when they walk in the room, "Woo!" You know? You know what I'm saying? The great light. They're going to conquer everything, they're going to do everything, they're perfectionist, they're motivated, they're the great light." And you're thinking, "How can I compete with that?" She said, "All you need to do is be the nightlight." How many of you have a nightlight? How many of your babies have a nightlight? What's a nightlight? Tell me what a nightlight is. It's just enough light in it to light the way, to stay steady on the course so that if you should need it, you can find your way. Everyone in this room just needs to be the nightlight until we discover ways to be the great light and we're all shining. Every day, every encounter, every patient, every time. It is an honor to be your team member and to be a part of your healing team.
I had a spot on my lung and they followed it for about, about three years.
Pulmonary nodules are very common in Mississippi because of some environmental factors that are in our area. And it'd be, it would be very easy for her pulmonary nodule to be dismissed as one of these non-cancerous nodules that people along our geographic area have because she was a non-smoker.
They checked it again and then it got bigger. So what they did then, they said, "Ms. Webster says it's got bigger, so we're going to send you over and get a biopsy."
And so once the biopsy came back, she was referred to me and to our multidisciplinary lung cancer group. And we discussed her amongst, again, our radiologists, our surgeons, our oncologists, our radiation oncologists, our pulmonologists, and we completed a complete staging of her disease, which included the use of our PET scan, the use of our pulmonary facilities as far as measuring her pulmonary function to try to determine what the right operation was for Nora.
I talked and he explained things and everything and so I said, I was kind of scared a little bit because I didn't really know, you know? And he says, "Ms. Webster," he says, "Don't be afraid. He said, "I'll take care of you." So that really boosted my ego.
We chose to do a lobectomy and that is what we consider the gold standard for a patient with lung cancer. And after discussing it with her and explaining the risks and benefits, she chose to have a thoracoscopic lobectomy.
I got my surgery and everybody there was just wonderful. I mean, see, and I know, first thing, we have Jesus in your life and he's guiding the hand of that doctor.
She did very well. She was discharged home on the second day. Thankfully, her pathology showed that she had a very early... Thankfully, her pathology showed that she had a very early lung cancer that essentially is cured. She will not need any additional chemotherapy, but we will watch her very carefully for the next five years to make sure that there's no signs of recurrence.
He even called my house. That was wonderful too. About three days after I was at home, Ms. Webster, this is Dr. DeDevo, how are you doing? I said, fine. That kind of lit up things too, you know? So that made me feel real, real important.
Here at the university, we have a program where we take tumors like Nora's and we bank them and we have them preserved indefinitely. And the purpose of that is to perform research in the future, to get a better understanding of lung cancer, but also if there were new treatment options that may come down the line, we have access to her tumor so that we can study it and be able to give her the treatment that she might need based on technology that we either have today or we may have in the future.
So university definitely is the place to be. They're going to take care of you, you know, they're going to take care of you, there's no doubt about it.
The hospital, I think, is amazing. It's as good as any hospital that I've trained in, through all my training. Great nurses, great doctors, very nice, great facilities. So it's a very easy place for us to take on challenging patients, challenging diseases and our patients are going to do as well here as they could do anywhere else.
I raised eight children. I have 27 grand and I have 15 great grand. Now, tell me, I don't have a lot to live for. Dying is not in my books anyway. Not for me, not yet. My name is Nora and I am a cancer survivor. My life is proof.
All right, so before we wrap this up, as you saw some of the videos, it should make you proud to work here. It does me. You know, I've been here for several years now and the whole idea was to get together on this forum and remind everybody that works in the Cancer Institute that we do do things that matter. We're making a difference and we need to encourage each other to do that. We're hoping to have several meetings down the road, the small group meetings, to get to know each other in other areas and how big our team has grown and see what all we're doing to make a difference. Understanding what research is doing, understanding the clinical side. And so what we want to do today before we wrap up is maybe have some question answering session for our leaders to see if there's anything that people want to talk about or may have questions about. So we're going to open the floor up to that. So if anybody has anything, just raise a hand and we'll, we'll go from there.
One of the questions that a lot of staff keep asking me is, when are we going to build our new Cancer Institute? I get that a lot. When are we moving?
All right, well, that is one that we... Okay. Can you repeat that question of, for me? Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood that. So the question is, when are we going to have a new building for the Cancer Institute, possibly on campus, as many people have heard? So I guess we'll let Dr. Mila try to answer that.
All right, just, so just so you know, one of the first things that I said during my second interview, when I came here for the second time and I was really interested in taking the job, I told now Chancellor Jones, if you want us to go for NCI designation, NCI does not like virtual cancer centers, they like people to be in one place. So we're going to be ready to go when we have a building where people can be, can be together in, that scientists can meet, can meet clinicians and so on and so forth. The last I heard, last year, it was two years away, but then I was told that there would be a one-year delay due to the necessity of making up the loss incurred with Epic. So that means two years from now. I am going to keep asking about that whenever I meet with university leadership. This is one of my absolute top priorities. It's not that I want to abandon this facility, but a tertiary specialty like cancer should be on the main campus and I also don't want to have to drive people back and forth every time there's a need for interaction between people that work in different, in different aspects of cancer. We are working on the plans for a new research building that's going to be half a block closer to here. What I would have wanted is for that building to also host clinical facilities. I understand that's not possible because the source of funding is different, but the next best thing would be to have our next clinical facility next door to it. Have you seen the master plan, the transitional master plan for the campus growth? I have and the outpatient cancer building is listed as priority one and it should be on the Woodrow Wilson side of it, a little bit back and relatively close to the research area. There are rough drawings for it. I have been assured multiple times that it is priority one and for all I can do will be to insist that it stays that way until I actually see groundbreaking.
So, does anybody have any other questions?
Based on the video, it seems like it's very clinically oriented, so what is the plan to kind of integrate the research with the last...
Well, I guess that's another one for Dr. Mila. The question was, with looking at the videos, it's mostly towards the clinical side and how are we going to roll in research into that portion of the marketing? Is that correct?
Marketing and then I guess financial also. So, here's how it works. We have 12 clinical programs that are the equivalent of what you guys know as a research program. They are teams of physicians that treat the same group of cancers. We have three research programs that are called cancer genetics and genomics, cancer cell biology, and molecular cancer therapeutics. Now that we have all of these in place, that we have built over the last three years, we're going to create perpendicular to these interest groups in specific types of cancer, beginning with those where we have the most researchers and the largest clinical volume. Thus would be breast and prostate. And moving on to other indications as we accrue more researchers. The goal is to submit types of grants that are translational in nature, clinical trials with correlatives in the lab or laboratory studies that end in a clinical trial. There is an informal such group already working on obesity and cancer and they have opened a clinical trial. That's a mini group, but the idea is to create breast cancer interest group, prostate cancer interest group, later on GI, pediatric, hematology. When we have enough researchers, and that means at least three or four, that work on that type of disease, that they can work with the clinicians at problems for which there is a specific knowledge gap and a specific need and especially on issues where there is a health disparity that is relevant to the state, because these are issues that are more fundable. And the deliverable of that will be grant applications that include all of the above. And I'm pleased to report that a lot of grant applications that are coming out of the Cancer Institute these days have at least one or two clinical collaborators in them as investigators, not just as names on a piece of paper. A lot more of that needs to happen and the interest groups are going to assure that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, so what we want to do is ask one question for you, for y'all to do for us before y'all leave. We have a form for you to fill out at the end as you're leaving, evaluation form. And what we really want to look for is comments at the end for when we do meetings in the future, how we can better suit your needs and how we can get people here to have meetings to support for team. We did two meetings this time to address clinical issues and make sure people can be here, but we ultimately want to have as many people as possible if we have meetings in the future so that we can get everybody together as a team and share more news for what the Cancer Institute is doing and show more videos that they're rolling out with marketing and just communicate with y'all. So if y'all could do that and also there's refreshments outside, so feel free to get a drink and some cookies and we appreciate y'all coming. Thank you.